I would like to meet the teacher. Tell you what, let's do this. Once we get all the kids in there. Oh yeah. I had, I had always been. Is the rest of the week, like your kids start school on Thursday? Do they give you lunch? Jordan. I mean, there's been a couple that were.
Jordan Hosey.
You know. Don't work at Killerwood? I can hear.
Do you remember her? Sorry, they've got a late start, y'all. You get to hear my chit chat. The mayor is doing the sound check. Aw, thanks Jim.
I'm just getting to order. First thing, we want to start invitation.
Well, if you have your heads please. Kelly Father, we just come before you tonight grateful for the opportunity to work with the people of Helena. Where we just asked that you would be as wisdom. Or that you'd be with us in every process that we pray. That you would just, honestly, you'd have your life, that your, your agenda is what would be accomplished in Helena. And we thank you for each of our employees, our department, council, our mayor, and citizens who are here tonight. And we just ask that you be with us from coming and going. And we ask all of this from Jesus Helena.
Amen.
Next, we have our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, council, welcome. Lavelle. Here. Joseph. Karen Bowles. Here. Vanquely. Woodman.
Here.
We have a forum. Next on our agenda is a presentation of the minutes from the, from July 26th, 2021. Now, while I have a chance to see those minutes. Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 26th.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have a presentation of our minutes from our work session from August the 4th, 2021. Again, y'all have a chance to look at those. Any questions or any comments about those?
I motion we approve the minutes in the work session.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, next, we have our revenue report and our bill payment. Again, you've had a chance to look at all the bills and the revenue report. Any questions or any comments on those? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we pay the bills? I'll second.
We have a motion, second, our payables. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Always, that's always a good thing. Uh, our municipal operations report from Mayor Pickett. Turn that over to you.
All right. Well, great to see everybody tonight. Just want to give everybody a little update of what things are doing on in the city. Um, as it relates to the operations. So, first want to recognize Officer Jeff Murphy. Uh, if you were able to see the National Night Out this past Tuesday. Uh, he organized that entire event. Uh, it's the biggest and best that we've ever had in the city. Uh, so wanted to make sure that he gets his recognition. All the hard work and effort that he put into that event, uh, this past Tuesday night. Um, as far as roadwork that's going on, we'd like to close down roads, it seems like, for something every day around the city. But it's a gas line break or a bridge out. Um, but just wanted to give a little update of where everything stands. Um, the right, new right turn lane, uh, on the corner, on the intersection of Coalmont and Hillsborough Parkway. Uh, that goes towards the schools, uh, from Coalmont. Uh, that has been finished up where they have shifted the right turn lane over to get better visibility of those people coming from Hillsborough Parkway. So, uh, we are thankful that the county stepped up, uh, to, to meet that need for us. The final striping, I was just notified a little while ago, uh, the final striping at 261, uh, 1752 intersection. Uh, the improvements that we've done as a city there to, to widen that intersection and make it more, better. Yeah, more better. Uh, for, for the drivers, uh, that final striping will take place tomorrow. Uh, they came and did, most of it's, uh, all the hand stuff this past Thursday night and Friday morning. Uh, tomorrow they'll come back and do the last little bit. So, we'll get that wrapped up and get every construction crew out of that intersection here soon. Uh, the bridge, uh, was closed down last week. It shouldn't be the last time that we close the bridge down until the new one is finished out. So, we are thankful for that large project that is going on, uh, and appreciate everybody's patience with that. The 17th, so in a week and a half, uh, the Helena High School band will be, uh, premiering their halftime show. Um, so if you want to see the show before it actually hits the fields for football games, uh, coming up on Friday nights. Uh, that's a great time to go and see these kids that put in a ton of time and effort into that. Set up a six o'clock at the high school, um, stadium, uh, on the 17th for that show. And then finally, uh, we know that schools are opening up, uh, here coming up this week. So, we have all of our purchase funders, uh, prepared and ready to go, uh, to handle the influx of traffic that we know will come to school, just like it does every year. And then, and hopefully, uh, more people will get on the bus and drive those to school than moms drop them off. But, uh, with that, uh, that's all I've got else.
Okay.
Next on our agenda is Resolution 0809, 2021. Resolution adopting transportation plans pursuant to the Rebuild Alabama Act. Which I want to turn that back over to Mayor Pickett and explain what that means.
Yeah, so this is a resolution we have to do every single year, uh, in order to receive funding from the state as a part of the Rebuild Alabama Act. So, these funds, uh, typically, uh, typically are ranging about $175,000 a year. We're using that to repay our roads. So, we have to have this resolution in place in order for the state to give me this funding. And we need that money.
Well, the two key words there are state and funding.
Yep.
All right. Council, you've heard his explanation. I'll entertain a motion for the Resolution 0809, 2021.
I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution 0809, 2021. I'll second.
We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we have the, a bid for the amphitheater bollards. Which are, it's like a fence. If y'all didn't know what bollards are. And we've had a, a bid from All Steel Fence. And we discussed it in, in pre-council. So, I will entertain a motion that we award the low bid to All Steel Fence. For the bollards.
I motion we approve the low bid for the bollards.
I'll second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, going right along with that, the next we have is award low bid for the amphitheater power to Titan Electric. Again, y'all could give an information of that. Any questions or any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we award this low bid to Titan Electric.
I make a motion to award the low bid to Titan Electric for the amphitheater bollards.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have our committee selection for the comprehensive plan. And now we spend a lot of time trying to make sure you put the right people for this, um, steering committee. And for the public, I'll read the names of the people that are going to be on this steering committee. Um, they're Daryl Howard, Robert Reddicy, Kelly Morgan, Tanner Mhouse, Chris Van Cleve, Lee Colsey, Blair Perry, Brian Pickett, DJ, DJ Jones. Amanda Trewood, Damina Gardner, Ryan Hayes, and Linda Wershner. Committee, okay, council, I'll entertain a, um, motion, I'm sorry, that we approve this selection of this steering committee.
I make a motion to approve this selection for the comprehensive plan. I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. We approve this selection. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we are, we have some motions to take from the table. Things that we had tabled last week. The first one is a, a motion to take the table ordinance amending 734-07, section 22, to take it from the table. And I'll entertain a motion that we take that from the table.
I make a motion that we take from the table ordinance amending 734-07, section 22. Create a new business license type to cover short-term rentals. I'll second.
We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor, take it through the table. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have a, a motion, we need a motion to approve or deny taking from the table ordinance imposing a lodging tax on short, short-term rentals.
I make a motion to approve taking from the table and ordinance amending a lodging tax on short-term rentals.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then, the last two, we have an approval or deny to take from the table ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for Biden for short-term rental. And we have a motion to take that from the table?
I'll make a motion to take from the table ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for Biden for short-term rental.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we have the first readings of these, of the different ordinances. And for the public, I know some people here maybe would like to speak to the council. And we will let you address us, but we do have a few, um, regulations we'd like for you to follow, please. First of all, we would like to leave it open to any people who have not already addressed the council. I know a lot of people have addressed the council last Wednesday, and maybe even that our, uh, council being two, two weeks prior to this. So, we appreciate it if you would, you know, new people speak if they have something to address. It will be, you will be allowed to speak for two minutes. When the buzz, the timer goes off, then we will be asked to stop. And also, we'd ask you to be respectful because the people who are addressing the council are doing just that, they're addressing the council. So, no questions or comments given to them from the audience at, um, at that time. We do that. So, we're going to take each. Well, should we take each ordinance? And that's for comments. Then I'll let people comment on all of them.
Sure. Make sure they say their address.
Yes, people need to say your name and address.
I hope there's one. I don't think we go ahead and do all of it.
Okay. Okay, that's why I want to make sure. Okay. So, at this time, if you would like to be recognized and come up to the microphone and, uh, address the council. If you would, please raise your hand or, or get in, you know, walk up to the microphone. And we will let you speak to us. We do need your name and address. And like I said, we would appreciate it if someone, if you have not spoken to us, we appreciate it for those people speaking, the ones that would like to address us. Anyone here that would like to? No, we can do, would you like me to let me do this?
Yes, do this nonsense, at least everybody knows.
All right, all right. First of all, the, one of the first ordinance that we are looking at is amending the ordinance number 734-07. The Business License Code of City of Helena by adding short-term rental. And what this, basically, this amendment to this ordinance is doing is adding a license code and guidelines for short-term rentals. Because we have not had any guidelines for short-term rentals. So, that's what that, uh, ordinance would be. The next ordinance that we're going to be looking at is imposing a lodging tax on short-term rentals. Which will establish a tax and associated guidelines for short-term rentals. And then we will also be looking at the zoning ordinance of the City of Helena to provide for short-term rental. This will, the intent of this short-term rental is provide a set of use, use regulations. Outside of residential areas, inside of B1, B2, and B4. And it will allow short-term rental dwellings within the city limit and establish minimum standards for their use. While also minimizing incompatibility with surrounding residential areas. So, we're looking at, saying, uh, use, use regulations outside residential areas. Would anyone you'd like to add something to those little smoxes that I made?
I, I'd like to add that, you know, currently, there are, um, short-term rentals inside the city that are not regulated, I mean, short-term rentals. And, uh, this would actually restrict any future ones in the residential zone. I think, um, just reading online that some people do not understand, they think that this is a vote yes or no on short-term rentals themselves. No, it's not. So.
I think too, for some clarification, I'd like to specify a couple of things as it relates to the ordinance. There's a definition in here that, that provides, uh, well, well, it provides some definitions for owner occupied and non-owner occupied short-term rentals. And it differentiates between the two. So, as a whole, when you're looking at this ordinance, it's, it's not addressing the homes in our home. So, if, if I wanted to go to Europe for four weeks, like I can afford that. But if I wanted to do that, I could rent my home out for those four weeks. And there's nothing that does not allow for that. However, if I was buying a property solely for business use next door to me, for example, that would not be allowed, the way this is currently written. It does allow for anything Airbnb, hotel motel, uh, bed breakfast in the B1, 2, and 4 district. The regulations only address and apply to non-owner occupied. Since we are not regulating individuals using their own home the way that they want to do that, since it is their, their house and it's their property. Um, anything else?
I do have one thing.
Go for it.
Um, for a full version of the proposed suite of legislation. Khan.
Yep.
Is going to have it posted to the city's website, um, before the end of night, tonight.
Yes.
He says before he leaves his building. So, if you want to read through all of it, um, in its entirety, uh, it will be made available for the public to, to review. So, just wanted to let y'all make that as well, to clear up any, like, if you, if you have any questions about any part of it, or you're unsure. That is where you can go to read through the whole thing, um, and hopefully it will, it will help answer some of your questions.
Now, hopefully, we maybe even answered some of your questions already. Now, I'll entertain, if someone from board they'd like to speak to us.
I, I do have a question.
Could you come up to the microphone and state your name and address?
Hopefully, my two minutes won't start.
There's a tough question. I may not need to speak.
Uh, I had read that was over by grandfather existing. That was Airbnb. Is that true? Yes. Okay, so I do want to speak. My name's Kathy Martin. I'm at 242 Roundtree Path. Um, and one of the issues that I have is haven't we thought about the impact of the infrastructure? For example, uh, according to postal regulations, a mail carrier has to have 10 feet to be able to safely deliver the mail. So, I've seen some super hosts that are advertising up to eight guests cannot use a garage, at least two parking spots. Where are the other six people that park? If they park on the street and within 10 feet of a mail box, they're violating federal law. It is a federal offense to obstruct mail delivery. Has that been addressed?
Yes, it has. It's in these ordinance.
Okay. Um, and then also the emergency vehicles, that's been addressed?
Yes, it's been addressed.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Just say your name and address, please.
Yes, hi. Uh, my name's Thomas Cockett. I live at 5245 Rory Drive. Um, I had some questions about the zoning. What are the V1, V2, and V4 districts?
The business districts.
So, what residential properties are available there?
Some have mixed use in them, like Old Town, for example. It's got some residential business. It's got, that would be like a mix change where there're resident, like, um, like some houses that people live in, and there's a restaurant here.
So, I couldn't, for instance, um, do a short-term rental on owner occupant?
If your residence is, is.
Not, not talking about owner occupant.
Not owner.
Not the way this is written, you could not.
So, are we allowing no, uh, SDRs that are non-owner occupied? On the list in those business districts?
I believe the way it's written is that those who currently run those in residential areas are allowed. No future one will be allowed. And if there is an option for variance in residential zones, that we'd have to go through the, uh, work adjustments.
May I ask about, um, 2.2, um, the zoning regulation?
Um, zoning ordinance?
Yeah, the zoning ordinance, thank you, 2.2. So, um, it would then an SDR, this is to ensure that the guests can get hold of the person who's responsible. Uh, on a platform like Airbnb, those people, like, they, they have everything, including my firstborn child already. Uh, they can contact me, they can text me, they can email me, they can call me on the phone, and I can't turn it off. Is it still necessary to post when you have that level of coverage? I mean, they, they have my phone number before they even book, they're already contacting me.
Uh, one thing that would, and, and I could get back and tell them, and that's your time to say that.
Carol, is that better?
They may not use Airbnb company. They might choose to do that themselves. And there would need to be something posted for people to contact, people that don't use those, those companies.
I have one other important question, but can I ask it if, if there's no one else? I mean, I'll, I'll wait.
Technically, since you've not spoken to us before, yes, I could give everybody else a chance. Take them back. I'm going to turn it over to more of us. Is there anyone else that would like to address us? That has not addressed us already?
Oh, I'll have to have follow-up to him. But, okay, I can wait.
Okay, thank you. Anyone that is not, that's new to addressing the council? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has had something new that they would like to add to the information they can do with the council prior to? Jordan Hosey.
Okay, now.
If you want to give additional information, correct.
Jordan Hosey, 3032 Allen Circle. Um, I'd like to know in regards to properties in B1, B2, and B4, how does properties in special districts get applied? What zoning and coverage do they?
Special district allows for, is allowed B1, B2, O, M1, and G.
Okay, so is there a difference between a residential and business resident, uh, or residential and business special district?
So, there's a difference between special district and B1, B2, and B4. Uh, if something is owned in special district, it would not be allowed to have, according to the ordinance, a short-term rental. So, that would be, a lot of, of special districts would be, um, they're zones, uh, special districts, even though we would consider them a residential. Old Gehawr, Hillsborough, Riverwoods, most of your newer neighborhoods that have been owned over the past 15 to 20 years are listed as special district. And that would not be allowed according to this one.
So, if the property, so can you just clarify that? Because that's confusing. So, when you have a property in special district in a commercial space, how does that get governed?
It would, it, it would not be allowed. Because it's, it's still in special district. You would have to go before the Board of Adjustments to get that approval for our variance.
That's outside of whatever its purpose is already.
Correct. Well, if, if there's already something on the books, we, as, as far as anything is applied, it, we have to honor that as a subject.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, gentlemen, you make the next, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Wouldn't, won't take so long. And I'm sorry, uh, we were out of town when y'all started this, or, or I wouldn't be coming in so late. Um, zoning ordinance 2.13. It says, um, no recreational vehicle, buses, or trailers shall be visible on the street or property in conjunction with short-term rental use. I understand wanting to avoid.
Correct.
Uh, safety problems and, uh, unsightly stuff. Um, however, um, a lot of our guests have been people who are moving to neighborhoods in Helena. They've been waiting for their house to be completed. It's behind schedule. They have nowhere to stay. And I could tell them that they can't come just because they have a U-Haul, you know? Or what if someone's traveling and they've got an RD? Or they can't, I can't accept travelers who have an RD? I don't, I don't know that I have any legal mechanism to even deny them housing if they have a party. Um, that's kind of odd, especially when you think, I also operate long-term rentals. I've had some in Kiwi Town and some in Alabaster. The problem tenants who park stuff on the street and leave it there are long-term tenants. The, the short-term tenants don't even have a presence. I, I just wondered if, if that wording was necessary, but that's all I had to say.
So, you're stating your opinion that you don't think it's necessary?
Well, yes, unless you want to answer me.
I think that ask is, and it's Thomas, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I called you about your last name, but I didn't.
That's fine. It's a strange name.
Um, is, it, just discussion possibly about whether or not this needs to remain in here. Um, the no recreational vehicles, buses, or trailers. And I, I mean, I think he's just.
What is it designed for events, I guess, is what I want to know.
I think it's a visual of the thing, if, if it's in a neighborhood, so it's not.
But you've already outlined that by the zoning, so it becomes an obvious issue, right?
So, I, I will say to your point, like, and I don't know what each neighborhood's HOA allows for. But I will say to this point, like, I live in Fieldstone, and we can have a, like, we could have our camper out of our house. For, I can't remember how long it is, but it allows for it for, up to a certain period of time. I mean, I think it's a valid ask. I don't.
I wonder if the HOAs could govern that themselves, but like, where I live, there's no HOA, so.
One of the things that I think might be difficult with that is that if someone, if they, if their renter were found to be in non-compliance. The HOA would have no way to contact them other than through whoever owns the property. And that could, I mean, those people could be way more involved by the time that happens.
I think he's asking, like, uh, like you said, road drives or the bill HOA. If they brought a movie truck, would that be a violation or could that be allowed, was what he's asking there?
Are you done about existing short-term rentals right now?
Um, I'm just wondering, um, am I supposed to ask my guests in advance, what kind of vehicle do you drive?
Yes.
And then if they say, well, I'm traveling to see my grandkids. I'm coming across country. We're going to be going down to Florida. I've got my RD on. Say, I'm sorry, you can't stay in Helena?
Are, are you able to post something prior to them looking at the property to state that?
Well, I can tell them how much parking space they have. So, I, I can say, I've got, you know, I've got a carport and two spaces in the driveway or whatever. But, uh, I, I don't necessarily know what they're driving. Um, but like I said, it's the long-term tenants and residents who live in houses who lose stuff all over the place and have giant.
They don't, they own that house and aren't about that house.
So, I have a question for you. Um, I don't actually disagree with you. Um, I, I, and I have a, for me, is if you're driving a camper across country, the likelihood of you parking it, I think, would be less likely, right? Probably. Possibly. I, that could not be the case as well, and I understand that. Buses, that's a weird one. Like, I just think.
Oh, no, we don't need a lot of buses. Where would we put that many people?
As it relates to, I, I've been, I've, we've been told numerous times at this point that several of these are being used. As it relates to, I, I've been, I've, we've been told numerous times at this point that several of these are being used for people who are in between homes in Helena, and particularly with schools starting up, going to have access to stay in Helena while they're going to be transitioned into those places. And I don't personally have a problem with a U-Haul or like a pod being somewhere for, you know, a short period of time based on the fact that they're just moving. I can, I can do that in my own neighborhood. Uh, I do think to this point, HOAs already kind of govern that for most neighborhoods. And so you have this exception here that, I don't know that that bothers me.
And I have a question, how do you think, seriously, how do you think this would come up?
Often.
Well, actually, not that often. Um, we've only had it one time. Uh, we had some guests who were working, they were with a company out of Georgia, their job was with logistics and shipping with Home Depot. And they actually had brought, it wasn't like a massive truck, it was like a, a U-Haul sized, like a twenty-foot box truck, which was hard. But we had, we had tons of space in the street, they could have parked in the driveway too, there was enough space to do that. But, um, I didn't necessarily know they were gonna bring that. Um, I can ask my guests, I can give them certain, um, guidelines about what they, where they can park and that sort of thing. But this is so restrictive that, um, the people who have been waiting on houses, none of them has had a U-Haul or a trailer. But if they were, and, and actually, one of my short-term rentals, there's a guy who has a, a, a trailer parked in his front lawn and two trucks, and he only has a one-car parking spot. It's all in his lawn and his driveway, and he's a, he's a resident, and I talked about unsightly. I, I feel like it's restrictive of the business that would actually benefit the city, um, while not, this is a double standard. We don't apply the same thing to long-term tenants. And it doesn't seem to accomplish, um, it doesn't seem to accomplish much for the city.
That would be ruined.
Entertained removing, uh, section two point thirteen.
The third sentence?
Yes, and leaving everything else.
No re.
Got two more.
Hold on, just a second, it's clear. Do you, are, are you in favor of removing it, or?
So is this talking about on the street or off-street?
There is that on-street parking allowed in, in the ordinance, so that's, that's already addressed. It would have to be, then, it's, it's also says in this portion, one point five designated off-street parking space, per two that there shall be provided. It's definitely that in the, anyway, so if you did, great, if you don't, you don't, is essentially what it would say if we struck sentence three.
Right. I have a question too, if, if this is, this sounds like it is gonna be, would be a very rare occurrence. Could, if the guest in advance was gonna have this, could a variance be permitted to him, or?
I, I mean, that's a lot to go through, a variance for something like a hundred and one, it's him to have to get on the, the agenda for the whole thing, that would be.
Well, it, it could be an issue of enforcement, uh, if the city understands that if someone has a movie van, called about a move-in to the city, that that would not fall under, we would not consider that to fall underneath that. I mean, it could just be an enforcement, I can enforce it.
And I think too, to keep in mind, one of the, the beautiful things about this is we're never doing it in here. If we strike that, and it's a nightmare, we just put it back in. And we don't even have the way to, we can revisit it next month if we want to, but it, it'll, it allows a freedom to the property owner to, to keep that. And if they can do that diligently, then great, it's working, and if it's not, we should shut that part down, because if it's becoming a problem for the residents around.
This is why we know of our weightages. So.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So strike sentence threes from section two point thirteen is the ordinance? Yes, okay, let me get my timer back on.
For clarification, Laura?
Yes, sir.
You still want parking on the street is not permitted?
Everything else would stay the same.
One sentence.
One sentence would be removed. That only that sentence would be removed.
Great.
Happy Mark, um, bear with me, because I just found out about all this, if some of this may already be addressed. I do have a question for the council. Um, do, similar to what they do in Hoover and other cities, do the short-term rental operators have to have a business license, pay a annual permit, and have, pay lots of taxes and show evidence of insurance, but lose one million of liability, personal injury coverage? And are those permit renewals subject to an annual review, and they could be rescinded if they're?
Okay, yes, and the ordinance is all that.
I didn't take my second one.
Yeah, come on.
I think there's some confusion.
Come in, come in, state your name and address, please.
Uh, Carol Hunter, one forty-six, Lake Davis and Lane. So last week when we were here, we were told that that piece of property was V four. And then we understand now that it's special district. So asking for clarification, from what I just thought we heard, we just want to make sure we're really clear here. That there would have to be a variance granted for that property to go into a boutique Airbnb, is that correct? From what I just understood?
Is it zone special district or is it zone V four?
It is zone special district, uh, plaque was recorded in October of two, and, and I'm sorry that we're just now giving misinformation.
I, is that how you say it?
I told you.
It's one of the five.
Right, right.
We were having to go back through records because the things that should have been audited were never. But yes, in October of two thousand and sixteen, um, that property was resur率ed with the purpose of, of rental property, um, for that plaque. As a city, we have to honor that specific plaque recording. So anything that's other, other special districts would not fall under this.
So you're saying the proposal for the Airbnb boutique is not approved under what?
It, it was approved back in October of two thousand and sixteen.
Because we have to honor that, because that's when that was.
But that's Airbnb, that's for rental property, like for the condominiums. That's why we're trying to get clarification, because what we heard and what now, I just want to make sure it's on the minutes that we understand, because.
So it was listed in the, the September two thousand and sixteen minutes, that's rental property.
Right.
Um, by definition, and I know this is splitting hairs, but legally, what we've been advised is by definition, the student agreement currently, at that time or today, has a differentiation between short-term or long-term rentals. So with the honor in two thousand and sixteen stating that it was for rental purposes, we have to honor that no matter if it's short-term or long-term.
So that building is approved?
Correct.
Okay. How can, anything else that we can do on as homeowners on the other side to, because, uh, last week it was a different ballgame. So now we're, do we still go to the planning and zoning to?
So you'll still have to know that, that, um, landowners will still have to go through the planning and zoning for, for the approvals for, um, the different building, um, items that are associated with it.
Right.
Um, and, and yes, this is an opportunity, uh, for you all as residents to, to work in and out, that, that, that makes sure that everybody is happy in the way.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to give you guys my cell phone number, we can work it out. We're good.
You were just getting up to let her in, and you had to jump off of, I'm just kidding. You want? Is there anyone else that would like to address the council, please?
Someone named Shelley Triple A, one twenty-eight Lake Davis and Lane. What'd you say?
Would you mind repeating your name and?
Shelley, Triple A, one twenty-eight Lake Davis and Lane. I don't have a problem with the Airbnb coming in at all, uh, great, it could be nice. The problem is the way it's been handled, because we're all, we've all been in this neighborhood, tried to discuss it, tried to, and tried to approach y'all. It's been some time, and this was back in two thousand and sixteen, it was already discussed, and it's already been decided. And we're just now pointing that out is a little bit of a burden. I'm just gonna say, uh, it's a bit, makes me uncomfortable about anything else that could or could not happen. And then also, um, lodging tax and all, and just, I mean, let's not ever make decisions along, for me, uh, based on money, that's just wrong. I just feel that way about it, but, um, that, that's what the rub is for me, not, not the Airbnb particularly. I mean, I think it might be all right, but, um, something's gonna go there, it might be very nice. But just, just that as a community, we don't, we don't feel like we have a lease. And we feel like we were taken to be discussed and led to the open discussion and possibility when there really wasn't one. So that, that's, that's my problem.
I do want to say, you know, that, I know when I speak to some of you individually, I told you I was trying to find out about that. So, I mean, you know, I'm not gonna apologize for what I didn't do, but I was, you know, that is something that I've been, I've been trying to get to that. And like you said, it had, we had to go back through records, and that was before I was on council, and what Mr., or, uh, Mayor Petey was, um, mayor of council at one, so. I guess what I'm trying to say is, we did not mean to mislead you, we were trying to find out the, the answers for you. So I, I, you know, I'm sorry to be dead, but, I know, I can speak for myself, I can't speak for anybody else. I was not trying to, to, to not lead you in the right direction at all.
Still, things change. And it was two thousand and sixteen, it's, it's two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah. And what the owner told us too, what he was gonna do, and now it's happening. Is it, it, you know, that's.
Right.
Yeah, just a lot of.
Is there any other questions before we do the first reading?
I understood that we were only taking questions on the zoning ordinance.
No, we're discussing everything.
May I ask another question?
Which one, the hurry?
Okay, this is about seven, three, four, zero, seven.
Okay.
Business license.
Business license.
Right. Um, couple of questions about two point one C, uh, about what it means. Minimum of one fire extinguisher for every two living spaces. I live in a sixteen-hundred square foot house, that would mean every three fire extinguishers, my house is fit in this room, plenty of room to spare. Or, is that, I, I don't know, I've never seen this for any long-term rentals. Um, is this standard, or is this?
It's the standard for us.
Okay. All right.
For safety reasons.
Cool, that's fine, I just want to make sure, emergency egress lighting, does that mean an exit sign? I gotta put an exit sign in my house, if I'm going here for a whole week.
No, this does not, this does not address anything that is owner occupied.
Okay, but if it's a long-term rental, I don't, I don't put an exit sign.
But that's not overconsidering, it's not, if our matchwork.
Well, I know, but why would you do it differently if it's a home? People come to an Airbnb because they don't want a hotel. Um, and it would be really odd if I had a home to put exit signs in it.
It's, it's light isn't not a sign, and I, that might be the.
Does that mean unfortunate?
So like a floodlight, just lights that, light the, the way, right? Yeah, not, we're not talking exit signs.
Okay, that would be helpful to know, because I wasn't sure how that would be.
Because it doesn't say exit signs, it says just emergency, self-lighting.
And if we need to add this to the definition, we can, to make it clear, you might have the same question. This just says egress lighting is that which eliminates the travel path from an occupied space
Great.
of a structure out to a public way.
Got it, okay. Um, F, on the same section, two point one, F. Um, when you talk about designation of agent, in this, I'm assuming that means that if, if I were an absentee landlord and I had, I had somebody managing the properties for me, this is so the city can get a hold of that person who's responsible, or who's the contact person, is that what we're talking about? Okay.
Was that it?
Well, that was my time.
You know, um, we're, we're having the first reading, so if you have additional questions, I encourage you to email everybody.
Okay.
This, this first reading is just, just added, first reading.
Um, Chad, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Based on the description that he just provided you, on the square footage of his house, what would be required? Is that seen like an unreasonable ask?
For the fire extinguisher?
Yeah.
I don't know what code it says.
Can you check that, and then we can follow up if it's, if it's out of line with that, and it's?
Yeah, we can, we can.
You feel like, you know, code allows for two, and, you know, based on?
Yeah, I mean, that, probably next year, whatever, rental property, something, I would love, we could go, we could come up here on that. And then the, the egress lighting, what we consider egress lighting will come under emergency egress lighting, is the kind of light that has a battery in it, so when the power goes out, the auto light comes on.
Lights outside?
So, not inside.
Oh, inside.
Because, okay, you can get up in your house in the middle of the night, and hit the light, park and walk around your house, because you live there, you know it.
So that's not what this says, so this, like, egress lighting is something that eliminates a travel path from an occupied space, structure out to a public way.
So a travel path is the hallway from my house leading to the front door to go outside.
So the path doesn't have to be outside, it doesn't have to be inside.
So you consider a hallway a public way, that is covered in that versus? Okay, I get what you're saying, essentially, you just need, the power goes out, you're saying it's just.
There are lights, and then you see where they're going.
Right, so in a folded building in a hotel, there's battery operated lights, when the power goes out, they come on and they light up.
Gotcha.
The hallway, the stairwells, outside.
That just sounds cool.
So.
Is that required in our long-term rentals?
Well, long-term rentals would be completely, you know.
Correct.
Okay.
This is considered a business, and therefore we need to follow the business, yeah.
Right.
You know.
What does Ted say about the definition of emergency?
About what?
The definition of emergency egress lighting.
I'm not exactly sure, but I know, like, I think the most interesting stuff, it's gonna be one of those where you have self-contained lights with batteries, when the power fails, that light comes on. Elevates the, the.
So backup lighting?
Yeah, backup, yes, yes.
Jordan, do you have something to clarify this?
I was just gonna ask, would plug-ins work, like those, um, dark plug-ins, well, obviously, she said when the power's out, they won't work, so I respect that.
Can we, can you check, two things for us, can you check on what Ted said about that? So that, we're just in line with the fire code regulations.
Yes.
And so for egress lighting and total number of fire extinguishers, extinguishers, whatever regulations, that based on staff or whatever.
Yeah, and how we plan on enforcing it. Cause I know if I have some nightlights that are better than, uh, that basically, you know, the huge, I believe, analysis, you know, we do follow the nightlights.
Right.
So I didn't, I would, you know, that would be considered, would be considered a, a, a scene.
A battery operated?
No wooden stairs or wooden decks.
I don't, I don't know what you said, I'm sorry.
No wooden stairs or wooden decks, no.
What do you mean, no wooden steps? As it relates to what?
Code, yeah, code egress.
Can't have no wooden steps or wooden decks, like you have a patio?
So that can be your, your light, your way to get out, your emergency way to get out.
If they have some fire.
Oh, you mean it excludes that, yeah. I did not understand that, I'm sorry, I was not following, so you're, you're just saying that egress lighting for outside of it doesn't count?
Yeah, can't have no wooden steps or wooden decks, or, you know.
So it's gotta be another way to get out. Gotcha, not going on wooden stairs or the wooden deck, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I think the gentleman in the back that likes to come and speak to us.
I have just some clarification for my.
We're just gonna say your name.
Hold on, so we can hear you.
Your name and address.
Daniel State Home, uh, four three thirty-nine Oak Hall Parkway. Um, in clarification to that, um, they make bulbs that have battery backups, that can be installed in any fixture themselves. It really just be like a picture, some kind of lighting with auxiliary power, they make some terminology for that. Um, and then as far as the, the wooden deck and everything, um, is it no wood deck at all, or can be fire-coated? Because, I mean, I've done it in different places.
Some places would, except that, would. Some places would, except that we've had issues here.
Okay.
Because the stuff that has been used here, you have to redo it every six months.
I, they have a lifetime on them, yeah.
Yeah, so trying to keep up with it, it, I know before I took over, it was not approved.
And I was really just clarifying, is that specific to this or how much, so, so, so it works. No, it's kind of, correct or concrete.
Correct.
That answered.
Thank you. I would entertain.
Okay, well, my first question.
I'm sorry.
I'll just start. B R E A Z E A L E, Brazil Lake of Country. Um, okay, in article.
Yeah, your dress.
Of one oh one Lake Davidson Lane. In article, I gotta remember my Roman, uh.
Okay, is this about, is this on the?
Eighteen. Cog River Buck Creek Conservation.
Which. The.
The zoning ordinance.
Is responsible. Okay, so. This is the zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes, ma'am, the existing zoning ordinance. And you're, I had to think about what am I, uh, from the number. Okay, uh, generally, the provision of river conservation overlay districts shall apply to any lands located within the flood plains. Uh, or, excuse me, floodways of Cog River Buck Creek tributaries. And, and/or the stream setback buffer, whichever is greater. Okay. The purpose of the Cog River Buck Creek Conservation Overlay is to protect the water quality and environmental integrity of the Cog River Buck Creek. Their tributaries in addition to the Cog River south of Shelby County Road fifty-two and shall receive additional measure of protection. Due to its O A W classification. I don't know what O A W means. So the vacant property that we're discussing is part of Buck Creek, yes or no?
Okay, um, I think y'all are talking about the property that's over the discussion about what's in Old Town.
Yes, sir.
Is, that's, that's gonna be the topic that's gonna happen in front of the zoning. I don't think our vote about that would affect it, except.
So.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So my question is, if it is part of Buck Creek, then section five, five dot four says. Uh, excuse me, the stream setback shall consist of tripped lands extending alongside both sides of Cog River Buck Creek. And shall include all land within two hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and fifty feet of Cog River and a hundred and fifty feet of Buck Creek. Measured horizontally from the edge of the, uh, stream bank of the active channel. So if the plating is already completed and it's within a hundred and fifty feet, which wins?
The, the plaque that's reported at the end.
The plaque, oh, that's right.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Same thing around that property, play it to a board, implementation of the Cog River Overlay.
Was it? Did you check? Anything, anything else, anything else? Can't say everything else, you're welcome.
Yes, I wanted to kind of get Charles' thoughts on this. Why don't you draw it back out of the box? Okay, on the license section, where we're discussing emergency egress lighting. On that section, see right now it says emergency egress lighting. I would like to propose that we change that to say emergency egress lighting. With auxiliary power to better define what emergency egress lighting is. So just adding those three words. Would y'all like to discuss that or?
Does that matter, Gerald? Fire building?
Rich auxiliary.
I don't know exactly how the code, you have to dig into code and see what it defines as. Cause like I said, most of the e, auxiliary egress lighting, when we're looking for, auxiliary egress lighting is a battery pack with lights on it. When the power goes off, it comes on.
Well, that would be auxiliary power then, right?
So, yes, so, I mean, they. I don't know if code has any kind of definition spelled out. I mean, that's what we consider. Auxiliary egress lighting or works of egress lighting is, is self-contained. And batteries, power.
But that, but you could put that in there with auxiliary power. I mean, that would cover that.
Yeah.
It would really stand help define what emergency egress lighting.
Yes.
Um, I don't, I'll remember my back to maybe say something and then I'm working. All right, Thomas, come on, we don't have.
I'm sorry.
I'll leave Rachel down here.
I'm, I'm running out though. I'm running out of questions. There's no egress lighting in here.
Interesting.
Okay.
But we do have, so you can't get us up here and figure it out.
So, um.
We'll find it.
Two properties that we have right now in Alina, um, which if you wanna ask questions later or whatever, if you wanna see them, you're welcome to, but. Um, we did what's called rental arbitrage. So, um, we, my wife and I and, and our business that we built for our sons, where we're trying to give them the business that they can work in. Um, the goal is to be part of a kind of hospitality business. So we're operating, we're advertising, we're booking, we're taking care of the cleaning. And all that stuff for these Airbnbs. What we don't want to have to do is repair the air conditioner when it breaks and, um, replace the mailbox when, when a guest runs it over. So what we have done is we have fairly common as business practice, businesses lease space all the time. They don't always own the building. Is that we lease the buildings or we are the long-term tenant. And since we're the tenants and it's our property, just like when you go to Europe for four weeks, um, you could rent your own property. Um, that's how we're renting it. So we operate it through what's called rental arbitrage. We have just as much accountability for what happens there. Um, we just don't want to have to deal with replacing the roof. We call up our landlord and we say, air conditioner's broken, fix his stuff. And he does. Um, but I'm wondering if these two properties, these two properties would totally not be allowed the way the ordinance is arranged currently. Because they're residential, among other things. Um, and we can bring it up to code. We can meet those requirements, but they're in residential areas. So I understand that these two could be grandfathered in for, I guess, uh, I guess. But, um, if they're not owner occupied and they're residential, um, then what's gonna, I mean, are we gonna be? Even though, even though we're being grandfathered in, I understand we're being grandfathered in and we're gonna be technically denied because it's, um, because it. Cause we're just not gonna be owner occupied or it's not gonna be, I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering where that leaves me. Um, I don't see a definition for this type of property. There's nothing like rental arbitrage.
So what you're saying is that yours is owner occupied for a certain portion of the year, but then, I'm sorry, we clarify that.
About, about what they are or?
No, so it's not my primary residence. I rented and I operated as an Airbnb. But there's no definition, I don't like that in here.
It's, yeah, it's on and off. But it already exists, correct?
Yes.
It already exists, yes.
Yes.
So if it is in existence based on how this is written, it can be grandfathered in. Now, what wouldn't happen is it wouldn't stay with the use. So if you moved out, that doesn't transfer to whoever rents that house after you. It goes away with you. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, cause.
You're right.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an agreement with my landlord.
Right. So if you, if, if you ever do not continue that relationship with your landlord, then that use, um, as, as a short-term rental would be gone. Because it is a residential, does that make?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I just thought I'd ask, cause it's, yeah, it's interesting.
That's a good.
Like I did, think about that with. It saves a lot of capital.
I, I've never heard.
It saves so much capital because then we can build a business doing hospitality, which is plenty of constant work because they can call you twenty percent. But, um, I have somebody else I call and takes care of the roof. That's his job. I pay him the, the.
Right. So, um, on the Alabama's, this, um, the Alabama code. Um, this is means of egress is under chapter ten. Public way is defined as a street alley or other parcel of land. Open to the outside area leading to a street that has been heated, dedicated or otherwise permanently appropriated to the public for public use. And which has their width and height of not less than ten feet.
So that's just something about that.
Yeah, and that's what public way is defined as in the Alabama.
But I'm thinking that we need to go with the international fire code also.
Okay.
That's what we use. Yeah.
And adopts without amendments, this adopts without amendments, international fire code two thousand and nine. So it could be in, in that as well, so. And we did stipulate in the verbiage, I believe, that it must be any clients who live in our code.
Yes.
Yes, specifically. I just know, we need to be super clear about the explanation of any long questions.
I'm ready.
I just wanted to add the, uh.
Yeah.
I'm beginning with the, uh.
Just the three little words that could make a big difference.
Right.
Last chance. I went, um, I'll, I'll, this is our first reading of the, of these ordinances. And like I said, they will be published on the website. The first reading that we have is for ordinance amending seven, three, four, dash zero, four, section twenty-two. To create a new business license type to cover short-term rental. Second first reading that we have, first reading is the ordinance imposing a lodging tax on short-term rentals. And the next first reading, we have is ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to provide for short-term rental. My question is, for short-term rental. Now, this, and again, remember this will be published on the, um, website. I've hinted to April. The usual values and the end details of the law. Now, I'll open it up to council comments. Hal?
Um, I'd like to thank the, um, everybody for coming out. I really do appreciate the feedback. We like to all attending these meetings. I would encourage all to attend all the meetings. We got a, a utility board meeting before this. And then we have, uh, believe we have a planning zoning meeting this week as well. So be sure to check the website next week. I apologize. Be sure to check the website and, uh, attend. You need to be active in your government. Um, I also like to bring the council and the mayor, um, for, you know, supporting the, the way marker signs to. As a way of to direct traffic to our businesses and our, um, you know, different places in Alina for a good enjoyment. Thank you.
All right, um, I'd like to give a brief report on the three, um, the three groups that I work with, um, as liaison. Uh, first is the library. I'm very excited because the featured author, author for August is Eric Carl. He's one of my very favorites. Um, I think all of us can remember the very, very big Caterpillar, so we need for that. Um, Storytime is gonna be on Monday the sixteenth at six and there will be a tech and craft on Friday the twentieth. Uh, National Book Lover's Day is today, so if you haven't already, you have to bring some of your books. And Halina's, uh, library is going to be at Market Days on Saturday the twenty-first, which is going to be a very auspicious day. You'll hear more about that in a minute. Um, so make sure you go by the table and tell everybody hi. Um, also on October, did you put that on paper? Um, August the twenty-first, um, the hot board will be hosting another Old Town Live event. Uh, it will feature jazz and music musicians. We've got some great artists coming in, um, from, um, the Mobile area, I believe. And another guy that's kind of regionally famous, so please come by and, um, just hang out with us in Old Town. And, um, and enjoy just being around your neighbors and your friends. Uh, also, the diversity and inclusion board had their first regular meeting last night and, uh, elected their officers. I would like to share with you the officers who were elected. Um, the chairperson is Domena Gardner. The vice chair is Rossis Washington. The secretary is Kenethi Donner. And the treasurer is Jarmont Andrewfield. Um, we continue to look forward to seeing what, uh, the value that the, these guys add to our community. And that concludes, uh, that was my way. Good luck to students and teachers this week who start school because I've got two students at home who are going to have a very difficult time getting up from the bus. So prayers from each pair of students. Um, okay. I would love to just let you know that I completely understand the frustration as it relates to what happened in two thousand sixteen. But I do want to let you know that one of the things that it did matter what you guys were doing, so that wasn't the only thing that this addressed. This addresses a lot of things in the city and the feedback that was provided here at this guided this document, this current draft. So the feedback that you guys provided absolutely played a role in how this was evolving. Um, I understand your frustration and I, like Ms. Allison, I'm, I'm sorry that that could not be helped. Um, the amount of feedback that we got, I would, I would just like to say thank you. I don't know how many coffee dates, neighborhood meetings, emails, phone calls I've had over the last three or four weeks. Um, but it is, it's, it's been appreciated. So just know that we do value the feedback. It, it, it absolutely matters. And I think that what you guys did was truly use your voices to help do things. Nobody got a hundred percent what they want based on how it's written. And that stinks for both sides, but your feedback did matter. And I just want you to know that. Even if, like, the document couldn't satisfy all of your requests, it, it did matter and we do appreciate it and we always want you to continue to provide that for us. Um, all right. National Night Out was, it was past Tuesday and I don't know if you guys knew you got to go, but it was fantastic. This was the largest one we've ever had, uh, of, of Officer Murphy two and any other officer or, I believe, that had anything to do with that. Um, it was fantastic. Where I said that there was an estimated, uh, they estimated over two thousand people came out and so that's three or four times what we've been in crowd we've had before. So that's fantastic. Um, and then we had the first responder dinner this past Thursday and that was wonderful. Um, and I do want to give a shout out to Parks and Rec because they were fantastic and really helping you able to model it to get that stuff prepared and set up. So I just wanna give them a shout out for that and another thank you.
Sorry.
Um, and then lastly, just a reminder, another opportunity to provide public feedback as it relates to things that impact us. Is this Thursday's meeting on the twelfth from four to seven at the Hoover, um, what's that building called?
Uh, the.
Yeah, the one on Valley Hill, just twenty twenty Valley Hill Road. Remember the, yeah, it was company. Um, there will be an opportunity for me to look at maps and see plans and provide comments. Um, so I encourage you to go to that. It's, um, one of the things that they utilize to, to move things forward in their process. So, um, if you don't have anything going on, please, please go. And then we really wanna see this project completed. And this is part of the process and we need people to show up instead of still want this. Thank you. So, what, what time and place? Um, so the address is twenty twenty Valley Hill Road. Um, it is four P M. to seven P M. this Thursday.
I don't think you need it all the time, just.
No, you can come in. Yeah, you can come in, go. Usually these formats are come in, look at maps, what we're asking, questions that you wanna ask. And then you just, I think they're providing an opportunity for written comments, which things were doing, but, um, I don't know that there's a public way. and then you just, I think they're providing an opportunity for written comments, which things were doing, but, um, I don't know that there's a public, like, comment section, I think it's written, oh, that's all those comments, so I don't think you'll be able to talk necessarily, or you can, but not, you know, to a group that's making decisions.
But you can wire it in.
Yes.
If this is where you find it, what's, what thoughts are, if you're telling.
Just two sixty-one, this is specifically related to the wiring of two sixty-one.
Correct.
Yes. And that's on my back.
I have to tell you, when I was first picked on council, I got to sit at the very end and I got to be the first one to speak. Now, being the last one, I just want to say I reiterate so many of the things that they have said, and I won't hold back over them. Uh, I do appreciate the council, we we try to work hard for you and I hope that we are always successful to you. I know we we try really hard to be and we will continue to be. Um, and this is your governor working probably in the best manner possible. I did want to say, you know, on Thursday, when this will start, things are gonna change around the land a little bit. Um, fortunately, for me, I have to be out at seven o'clock, seven thirty, so, so anyway, watch for those kiddos. And, and, um, just appreciate our apartment heads, and I appreciate all the the residents of Helena that come and and let us hear their voice, because that's how we can make decisions, and so, thank you very much. With that said, I will enter a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, I've got a motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, for, uh, streaming in, just to let you know, tomorrow morning, we have a Helena Business Association meeting at, um, Brown Sugar, my favorite meeting place, and, um, starts at eight thirty, finishes at nine thirty. So if you have a business in Helena, come join us, we're a lot of fun, I'll see y'all tomorrow, bye, y'all. Oh, we need to find that egress lighting, let's do that. Where is that egress lighting? Oops. I'm sorry, it won't let me change, there we go. Where's that egress lighting? I'm on my. Let's find it. Ooh, I like that purse door and hoses. Oh. Okay, so we got the exit. Where do you think the egress lighting is?
Congress, I guess, before it actually goes into effect.
So what change?
Um. Okay, there we go, there we go. Work compliant. Y'all have a good night, see you tomorrow.